I would like to call to order the August 23th Greater Clark High School Board of Trustees meeting. At this time, Mr. Mark asking if you would note that Ms. Hutchinson and Ms. Fitzpatrick are not here, and if you would all please stand and just say "pledge".
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for which it stands, for which it stands, under God, in the judicial, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would like to move to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
You do, I have a second.
Second, Ms. Perkins, any questions or comments? If all of you can see someone, I say "aye".
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The next public comments, we have none. And we are into the Educational Foundation presentation.
Alright, well good evening, Board, and Professor Lothner. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share about the Education Foundation. I know a lot of you all are already invested in this, and so you know about it, but in case we have some viewers that are maybe first time learning about the Education Foundation, just want to briefly share with you about what we do, who we are, and how we do it. So our Education Foundation started in 1999, is a non-profit. We began giving away a couple hundred dollars a year, and over the years, we have grown to giving away over $200,000 annually to support our schools. We support every school in Greater Clark, every teacher, every employee at the unit. And we do this because we have awesome volunteer board members, and some of them are featured there. Also, I want to give a shout out to Teresa. She's actually the School Board of Trustees that serves on our Education Foundation Board, and she has been very patient and helpful for us, so thank you Teresa. So the way that we operate is we have different avenues of funding. Some of those are listed there. Our largest revenue is our Champions for Children event, and that happens in the spring. Some of you all have been to that enough. It raises about 40 to 50 percent of our annual budget, and so not only is it a great fundraising opportunity, it's also an opportunity for the district and the foundation to recognize mousing individuals in our community, such as our Employees of the Year, our Alumni of the Year, Business and Nonprofit of the Year. We also get funding from the Employee Campaign. So this is an opportunity for every Greater Clark staff member to make a payroll deduction, and we have seen this number grow year over year over the past four years. We are excited that our staff get behind us, and obviously, the staff at North Haven is pretty excited as well. They have 100% giving there, and so I think they have, Laura is a rock star, she, the principal there, they've had 100% giving, I think for the past five or six years, so.
She's the one on the floor, right?
Yeah! We also have a Give for Good Day, which is a 24-hour day of giving where people can give online. That is coming up on September 15th. We have a Women for Greater event where 100 people give $100 to raise $10,000, and this initiative supports all of the arts in Greater Clark. We have a really fun purse travel as well. So the initiatives that we are able to support because of this funding include, my personal favorite, our creative classroom grants, which allows educators an opportunity to apply for grants, $500 in their classroom, and we've seen some really unique and creative things come out of those grants. What I'm most proud of, and what our foundation is most proud of, is that about four years ago, we were giving maybe $12,000 away in gray dollars, and this year alone, we are giving away the most grant money we've ever given away before, and that's $50,000. In addition to that $50,000, we will give out $10,000 in art-specific grants that funding, again came from Whonover Greater, and it helps with art needs in the district. We support our academies of Greater Clark at all of our high schools. We have scholarships that we house at the Community Foundation of Southern Indiana. We give funding to Dexter Robotics at the elementary, middle, and high school level. We give new teacher welcome gifts, which is great because it is a lot of money to start off a new classroom as a teacher. And lastly, our teachers supply bus. So this was actually an initiative that was formed based on educator feedback. They just kept telling our foundation, "Hey, we just need some pencils and dry erase markers", and we're like, "Okay, we can help you with that", and along came the mobile teachers supply bus, which launched for its first time last year, and it has just been so much fun. I wish I could like bring all of you all with me on the bus, so you can see the reaction of the teachers, and how excited they get over a sharpened pencil, or a certain brand marker, and it's been really fun. A piece that you may not know about the bus is that Amazon is a great partner with us in this bus, and we created a mini Amazon distribution center at Charlestown High School. And so all of our stock for the bus is housed at Charlestown High School, and shout out to Charley Mattress, the academy coach there, who worked with Public Service Academy, and the kids, students, they stock all the items that stock the bus to make sure the bus is ready to go. They take a lot of pride in that. I was actually there today, sorting through everything we collected through the summer, so lots of pencils. A way that you can help our stuff up, that nation, is just follow us on social media. We always have a lot of happening, and we want you to be a part of that, also share it with people. And lastly, what I came here to do is I have a check presentation for the Academies of Greater Clark in the amount of $10,000. So I'm going to invite our Board Chairman, Josh Schellman, to come up and present the check with me. And I'm going to call Josh out, because he is an alumni of Greater Clark, he's a parent of Greater Clark. He is going into his second year as President of our Foundation, and has been an excellent leader for us. So we're going to grab this picture, will we do?
Well, I'm also going to invite Brian Reed, who many of you may not have met yet. He's our Academy CTE Coordinator. Some of you may have met him, yeah, but Brian's been a great job for us in those areas, and he's really been a great addition. I also want to say Emily, Josh, and the Education Foundation, they're doing a great job for the schools, the students. I mean, this last year was a great year, you know, for all the things that you did, we appreciate it. I'm not on the photo wall.
Thank you again for everything you do, I appreciate it very much. The next item will be the Perfection Group buffet. I'm not sure who's going to come to the wheelhouse and do that.
Chris, you have to tell me, I'm sure the practice is on. Chris, you can answer. Well, I may not be able to answer. First things first, you're getting a magazine.
Oh, nice.
A magazine is a little easier.
Are they good for magazines?
And don't be alarmed, I have a tendency to role-play, and if I did this kind of question, this should take longer than 10 minutes. So you got that going for us. And then Amy, do you? And I have, you have one. You, Jeremy, I have one for you, if you would like a magazine. It's a PDF, you know what, I'm going to walk you through this, and I have a...
Is that where it can use it?
And you can use it for reference. Here's what we're going to do, I'm just going to go and hit the high points. First things first, if you just open it up to the implementation team, I just want to make a shout out to the top of the right-hand page there is our executive team. I'm going to make a shout out to Andrew Afro, who happens to be my son. He put this banking together for you. He put all the content in there, and had Chris and I review it, look at it. But my intent was to bring a lot of people here, and I have to show you, but I got to be honest with you. Nick Afro, his brother Anthony Afro, his son Ben, and 20 people went down to Eastern Kentucky today to help build the house. And I think that's far more important than you being here tonight. So they're down in Eastern Kentucky for the next day and a half, and doing some servant leadership, something you all do day in, day out. We appreciate that for you, and hope to get back safe. Now, I just want to say this, if you look on the left end of the page, there, left side of page four, those are some like 25 people that I estimate are perfection, that have touched this contract over the last year. These may be engineering resources, project resources, or so forth, but these people have all been in your community, and in your school buildings. Now below, where you see Chris and Amy, that's the teams that are here every day. And just about a month ago, we hosted a meeting here, this room here, with the CEO and the President of SMS Company, who gave us their commitment that we're going to continue to work for some of the issues we have to get these things done. So with that being said, I'll just start out by saying, if you remember last year, I asked another person, I said, "Remember four Cs", and we thought what the Cs were, comfort, cleanliness, continuous improvement, and cost savings. That is what we talked about, and that's what we're doing. That was our value statement to you a year ago. Those value statements still mean the same today, but I'm going to add two. The Cs, and so I'm going to keep them as Cs. The next thing I'm going to use this year, and it's compliance. And what's compliance mean to me? Compliance means to me, and I'm going to commit this to our team, that compliance means accepting, accepting because we still have challenges. I'm not going to hide, I'm not going to say we don't, we do. But we have to accept those challenges to continue to improve and build upon those challenges. So that's what I'm adding to the list this year. We are going to accept the challenge, just continue to provide you cost savings from the district. So with that being said, you can just quickly turn the page. And you see there on page six, that is nothing more than a timeline as to how we got to where we are. Alright? That takes us back to April of '21, to where we are today. You can read all that in your spare leisure time. Page seven, now why page seven is important is because this is a snapshot of what you got. And we measure everything in square foot. So that's what you've got on your plate, day in, day out, with your running your district at the peak potential, at the highest capacity that you can do. All those pictures on the right of page seven are what we do for you. So in a snapshot, if you look at those things, we just don't do custodial, we just don't do HVAC, we do all those other things for you. That's under our purview, and that's what you contracted with us to do. So my comment to you, and my commitment to you today is rest assured that we're taking care of that for you. We may have challenges, we may stumble, but rest assured, we're not going to let you down, okay? Now, go to the next page. And I count this as metrics. Page number eight. I know we're moving quick, but this is what we do for you, day in, day out. Two million square foot of building space we attempt to clean daily. We mow at an average of 150 acres monthly. We plow 61 parking lots. We staged almost 900 events last year. We performed over 5,700 work orders. We maintain 1,700 HVAC systems in your district. Pardon my mistake, if I can catch this, square footage, Andrew had acres of parking lot. You don't have 501,000 acres, so I had to... I caught this today, you actually have 501,000 square feet of parking lot, not acres. And Andrew and I caught that this morning. That's what we did, we paid that much square foot of parking lot for you that year. We replaced 125,000 square foot roofs. We developed and dedicated over 4,100 project management hours to this district. And our HVAC technicians, if you remember, a year and a half ago, we had filters that ended in change. You saw those filters. You may remember the box stacked high at Jeff High that were stuck to the ceiling, and dirty filters over there. We have done 12,300 hours of preventative maintenance and repair. So do you think your culture has changed a little bit in the last year? Your culture has, and I'm going to go on record as saying so has your, the ceilings. They have improved tremendously. And what does that mean in savings? That's page nine. We provide you a service that you pay us for. You have savings of $500,000 in cleaning supplies you didn't have. You had a previous service contract that you outsourced for $200,000. We estimate you had salaries and staff, Chantoro made us for 5 million. We have dedicated over $600,000 of engineering design fees, if you haven't seen the simple manual. And we alone spent $113,000 in small parts and facilities that do have had to be fixed. So when you see the filters being changed three times a year on a consistent, according basis, that's what that's for. So you have savings money. Alright, let's look forward, what have you done? Page 10, you've got an $8 million ester project. Everything included in that $8 million ester project is what's listed on this page here. Page 11, page 10. Every $8 million was dedicated to HVAC. Right, please.
Close, very close. Touch-ups, small minor walkers, and punchless items. I'll make your equipment as soon.
Last week, you had a admin council meeting at Patterson, and I showed up, and I was a little bit hesitant to run into one of your principals, because we have, we have had five water leaks in one school. With the new system we put in, faulty valves, whatever they were, maybe we tweaked it a little bit too much on the install group. And I was going, and I was going to make it a point, and I was going to dress him right away, and I walked up to him, and I said, "Man, I'm really sorry about what happened, with the ceiling tiles, water leaking coming down, and you had a new classroom." You know what he said to me? He goes, "Tony, you have no idea how much better it is. We can take that." I kind of get goosebumps saying that, because I was expecting maybe to not get a leave, maybe to get a year, and he was so pleased with what the efforts that he's gotten with this new HVAC system. So anyway, in addition to that, you had the ester money, and you can read what we've done. There's a lot of stuff there, there's a lot of work that's been done, some of the pictures that's been done. So I'm not going to go over all that, and what we've done in New White, I just talked about. I love the ducts off on page 12. If you look at the blue duct sock in there, you're probably saying, "Well, that's a duct sock." Well, duct sock is the way the air is moved in there now, and it's far more efficient, and I'm probably feeling pretty comfortable saying they're probably pretty comfortable there. Alright? Then you had a $4.4 million bond project, page 13. Me personally, and this is just me, I love how you look. If you look at that boring in there, anybody seen it? Oh, is it not just stunning? Now, I'm going to jump around and just show you one thing. And you probably haven't seen this, but we presented this to Mark and Jeremy and Laura back on August 1st. This is a Yunita Element, or we call it a Facility Monitorization Plan. If you recall, when we were doing the task force, oh gosh, that's over here right now, isn't it? You had that perfection information all over, you had Lancer BB's information all over, you had ESG's information all over, and there were all kinds of color graphs that told you what condition stuff was in, and it was color coded, and you saw red. We knew it was bad. Well, I am proud to say that this is what Yunita looks like today. For the record, Yunita no longer has any rent. That's not to say it's perfect, but through the visionary efforts of Laura, Jeremy, and Mark, we only have one more thing to do there once this gets done, and that is a roof, and some cow wall adjustments, and you can check mark off on that building and say, "Wow, this building is as good as new for the next 20, 25 years." Now, what's our commitment to you? When North Haven's done, we'll give you one of these. And as we continue to check these buildings off the checklist, you can rest assured that we have the certification process that says those buildings are where they should be today. We wanted to grab all that red. Alright, so that's the bond money. Alright, in addition to that, page 14, here around the fall break time, there are going to be all those new skylights, and I'll replace them there. The only thing left we have, that you, is the roofing, and what is it, the cow, what do you call it? The cow wall, or what do you call the aluminum stuff that?
The facade, the front facade.
Facade. Alright, page 15, you've all seen this, you've also spent money on parking lot making. I just hope that last looks as good as it does now. I thought it went dead down the road. I think Mark said that 15 or so years before the day, the parking lot making. So you can see some of the pictures up here of what they look like today. River Valley is my pride there. I walk in the tribe of River Valley, and see what that looks like versus what it was. That's where I think it's going. Alright, then you can look in 16 and 17. 16, there's what we're doing at Charlestown Middle School, the HVAC upgrades there. And I don't know for you, but you have a lot of pneumatic controls there, and now you're going to have automatic building automation systems in there to enable buildings a little bit more efficiently. And then there's your roof roof, so River Valley right there. Alright?
Which is now finished.
Which is now finished.
That and North Haven are finished. There do look, again, North Haven, we did our pencil swap last week, and just mind test us.
So if you go to page 18, you can look at the dock picture there, where it's a spilling roofing, the EBITDN roof. See the guy's hand there? That's not good. Now, you can look at what it looks like today. That's a remarkable difference. Kudos to you all for getting all that work done. And page 19, there's your district light saving that you've done. Page 20 is the North Haven roof project that you've done. And the beauty about this, I forgot this, I started talking. What you're doing in Yunita today with the art construction project totally coincides with what we did on the HVAC side. So all the controls of the HVAC that we put in on this ester project there are going to match completely what you're doing on the pleasure rendition. Beautiful, absolutely beautiful. I can tell you, there are school districts that do that very often at all. And that's the same way with North Haven. So the North Haven roof, the roof on the new building will mirror what you've got going on the building today. But a full, are they 40-year warranties?
Thirty.
Thirty or 40?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll hold those warranties for you. These are full warranties. These aren't depreciated, these aren't, if you touch something and then you up void the warranty, these are full warranties on the type of roof you put in.
I'd like to say, you know, as far as the foresight of Mark and his, you know, factory plan, and the rolling factory plans, you know, the equipment and the things that we're putting in aren't going to be in a position another 10 to 15 years for having to do this again. It's more quality equipment, equipment that's, that we're looking at not just replace it with whatever's going to work. I mean, a lot of time and effort's went into making sure that this isn't back in the same position where we're having to do this. So it's, it's a good thing that we put a little bit better type of equipment in there to be able to manage and maintain, so even though we looked at overall savings, where the equipment costs more, this maintainable cost has went down considerably. So overall savings were lower. So it's a, it's a big step for the future for the district too, not just now.
So that's it, page 21 there, so beforehand, the roof pictures at North Haven. You know, I drove up there one day just to check on names, and I saw a black hole was down. You all know that story?
Maybe it was day one, day one, or roof runs over the black hole. Day one, right? Or go out there, start in the roof. It's already blacked out.
Imagine black hole. And I never realized that that black hole base was about the big, because it's huge. But we took care of it, so anyway. And about it, so those are part of the challenges that we have to accept. And if we accept them, we'll... Alright, last, page 22. I don't know what else to call this, they call it a grinder pump, but it had to be done in Yunita. And I think that helped a lot, didn't it, Chris?
It did.
And I believe it had something to do with sewage.
Shout out to the plumbers on this, they go down a 20-foot hole in the ground, literally full of solids dug through down to the pipe in order to get to this, to work the drain, in order to... Yes, and it was that bad, and so, yeah, they, good, and they did a great job of getting that fixed.
And then the last thing on page 23 and 24 are commitments with your current relationships, your contractors, your art construction, and Board. We are working with them day to day, making sure that our schedules are being met, our equipments are being delivered. We offer priority under everything for us. We do not want any delays for you. So all the equipment that we have from these projects are in order entirely. So you expect no delays on or anything. Alright? And the last page there is just who's here every day. These are the people that you can call, and if you have any questions, you can pick up the phone, call anybody on here, or if you get to reading this stuff, you have a lot of questions, just give me a call. So in closing, I'm going to say, what is our commitment and goals to you next year? We are going to accept the challenges as we have them. As yesterday, we had a nice meeting at Jeff High, working on some things. I can tell you also, it's one of our goals, through the visionary efforts of Chris, Nick Afro, and Josh Schellman, we are planning ahead so that with the schools, TJ, JJ, Wilson, which are Pleasant Ridge, we want to keep those things operating as best we can until your school do school, so to speak. So we're going to put together a plan on the equipment that can no longer be maintained, and try to come up with a cost-effective way that if we do have to replace stuff, and it's a cost, we want to be able to take that stuff when the schools are done and put it somewhere else. So our thought process is, we got spot coolers coming for some of them, but we, our thought process is to use what we call these ductless split systems, which are marginally, they're self-contained units, where we can put these in buildings for temporary cooling if needed and so forth, rather than taking large costs out. So we're working on that plan for right now. So with that being said, I'm done. That was 12 minutes, but... Any questions? I have one that has to go to Chris, and heads through his efforts with Jeremy and Laura, making sure, because without those people, this would not be where we are today. That was easy.
Thank you, Tony. It was all good news. Thanks.
We have challenges.
Yes, we have challenges. Thank you. Alright.
Thank you, Tony, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we have major funds bonding report. I know we're all waiting on this. And I simply have it as well. Good to see you.
Good to see you, good evening, Board. I just spent a lot of time, we're going to be doing hot talking tonight, so we'll just kind of go through this from, you know, relating to the high points in June, which is a major time to get ready for your budget season, but you can see how we operate through the month of July. My major funds, which is education, operation, debt, service, pension debt, and rainy day, that those are, as we call those, our major funds. It's not like it's any disrespect to any of them we have, but these are the funds that are affected through the budget process with state of the year, and then the current bulk of requirements. So currently, at the end of July, for education fund, you're sitting at $5.1 million. I remember our goal was to have $6.7 million, but you're receiving revenue every month from the state of the year, but maybe that will be miscellaneous, right, depending on when that comes in during the year. I didn't just say you can connect with them in the year, clearly. But compared to last year, you're seeing a balance of $8.1 million. Remember, $8.6 million, I'm sorry, the balance is $8.1 million. But last year, you had $8.6 million. But that $8.6 million was not your money, it was T-W. Right now, you have $8 million this month.
You'll think twice and you'll say, because of who's going to be the president, won't you?
Call them.
Yeah, no, I'll be all right. Let's just call this book session here. This point in time.
Try, go as fast as I can.
You're fine, you're fine, don't worry about that.
We're on the book, keep presenting.
Yeah, don't worry about it, we'll go.
So, wait about eight, nine, ten minutes or something like that. Which is too outside of last year.
I see there's a correlation between this and the hand.
That's correct.
There's a, I get it now.
That is correct, so, you know, I will start off with something that I'm still sorry that the school budget was like watching paint dry, so, I try to make it as handy as I can, but really highlighting the points that are important for me, for you to understand why you made the decision to do, where you were, where we're at, where we're going at, it's very few, we're very few people. But in addition to that, of course, none of this can we done, um, working out a, a district-wide budget, uh, does take through the summer and very intentional, and what some of the struggles that, uh, school officials are starting to face now is that the primary education division finance is facing, and I blame them, so let's get this kind of clear, they're facing, uh, requirements from federal government on account structures because an ESSA, the backboard ESSR, that's what it is, an ESSA requirement at the federal level, the annual transparency. So, this is. Yeah, I think we're going to answer.
Just every student succeeds that.
Exactly, yeah.
Just the lights have not come up behind you, right?
Actually. So, they just, at the federal level, and they're asking the NEDC division finance to start disclosing this information. What has compounded the issue by that requirement is how our account structures work. So, for example, recently, we were asked to do a survey of staffing benefits of full-time teachers, meaning you were spending more than fifty percent in front of a classroom. So, although your superintendent has a teaching license, he's not considered a full-time teacher, you know, as a certified teacher. So, he doesn't count, which, he's our top instructional leader, always been made into this situation, but he's also did have the operations. And he is the instructional leader. So, you know, just really, uh, kind of point this out, remember, they are, they can use change. So, they don't have data, they don't allow our counselors to be counted towards these type of things, or for instance, they don't have certain data from five years of history because we're not expected to get until twenty thirty, on that kind of thing. So, so, this budget is entered into the gateway at the highest level that we can, and we will put the appropriation in, which is one of the things that's going to come up one more time, put the appropriation in accordingly, and always be able to adjust several times throughout the year. I have a provision at the end of the year that I can do a transfer all the way through the entire fund and come to you with a resolution to state that I didn't do. Anything that's made, for example, if I take something out, let's say I take two million dollars out of line item and move it to something that's totally different now within the budget, I come to you with a resolution. But, uh, and not significant just for me, just operating, paying, and being able to function through the school district, it just occurs and I come to you and hear that. So, um, and it may be kind of difficult, but, you know, lucky for us, we understand our school finances here again, and we're able to handle it. The other thing is, is in order to be able to do this, I gotta think the business office, they're kind of, I don't know, some get real bitter, uh, Emma, who's in my, in my office, who did this, uh, for the book, which takes on a personality, I was making, I choose someone every year I hadn't yet, in the very first couple of years I did those, and then we go ahead and go from there. And it starts to, just by what goes on in life in the business office and in school, which just takes on its own personality. So, I think we had a conversation, she knows that they, what we've been talking about, and the big push is a fighter plan we've been talking about because of having to update that and the strides that we've made on our buildings. So, she created this, uh, I have to put a shout out to her, and then the staff getting obligated behind us to create this information. So, your very first thing to remind you to cover is our school calendar, and as you can see, there's, we start way back in April on our budget, uh, discussions. Um, we got a, I had a very seasoned, uh, budget rep that was here, uh, that I've known for a long time, who now has to move on to another, another area because, you know, when they have major changes, he's used to those major changes. So, we have seasoned new rep that I've been on with, uh, for quite some time now, and so we've been talking since April, and to kind of let her know where we were, we're at today, and where we're going, so that way she's ready that we submit all of this data to her, she'll know what we're looking at. Primarily, you know our commitment to the dollar ten, so I started with that. And so, she really does know that. But according to this, uh, uh, schedule here, tonight is the twenty-third, this is your deepest, uh, presentation of the budget. The official will be at the regular board meeting on the thirteenth, where I will ask permission to advertise the budget, so you could see details today. I will trim this up on the thirteenth, um, you'll have time to digest what you're getting and ask questions, either now or then, even on any, um, once we do get the permission to advertise, we then, um, look, put it out, we don't have to own our advertising newspaper, which is the same as the district. And then on the twenty-seventh, you have a public hearing, you can make comments, and then on the eighteenth, you will adapt that. School districts across Indiana, all of them start beginning November first of every year, so that's pretty common. I wish that back this year, we're just a smidgen behind, but not behind, because we had some things up in the air as this board was aware of what direction we were going with our budget plan. So, that made a major difference in what we were looking to attain with our ten. All right, on your page two, because we've been together, everybody understands these five major funds, because every month we talk about them, but don't forget, you did have a general fund that was broken after education and operation, and you will see in this book, that happened between two thousand eight and nine, and I'm showing you what you had at eight that started that bucket to be developed. Those aren't the numbers that we used, it's just so you remember how we got there. This is one of, uh, John's favorites, I'll say. Every time I say this, it comes to me, but normally, in this graph, this will show you, remember, I told you the June thirty balances kick you off for the eighteen months of plan, and I have to know what those are from July one to December thirty-first, and January one to December thirty-first of twenty-three, right? So, those numbers are very key. So, if you take a look at your cash balances across the board, for the three funds that hold your life together here, your education fund is the blue line, your operation fund is the orange line, your rainy day is the gray. I believe one time I said, and it's been a long time since you had more money than I had. So, what I did is, more like, I just showed you in the year I added it to June, so you could see, that your blue line since twenty sixteen is significantly different. Your orange line since twenty sixteen, that's our brackets, I went significantly different. Now, you're going to be maybe a little concerned about your rainy day, it did get a significant balance, but did drop, uh, to cover the health insurance, we do recall that, we were able to pay back some of that money, and so we committed this year is to try to build that back up. This side of the district is kind of common in the state of Indiana, that you have sixteen million dollars to get in there. Our goal is to get it to ten, and I hope that we can do that. So, that's what we have to do, because if you have that cash flowing in there, remember, we talked about operations laying in the red, and I don't get too concerned about that because of the revenue coming in. If you have that there, that can happen, you, you make, your actual break statement does not get what it holds, right? So, that's the purpose core. If you're making a decision to, to purchase maybe something, we can do the cash, you know, earn this money such as we've experienced, and reimburse yourself, and that rainy day will hold that appropriation and the cash. Since we are talking about cash and appropriation, let's cover that one more time, right? Appropriation is, in some folks' vocabulary, the budget, or in this vocabulary, is the authorization to spend, right? The only way you can get authorization to spend up to the level where I'm asking, several things have to be in place. Your revenues have to be able to come in and support it, and your cash balance. So, you will see from years past, when you get to one of the sheets, how low your appropriation was because you didn't have the cash to handle. Therefore, when we want to give raises, or we want to do things, we don't have the authorization to do so. And sometimes, if your revenue does come in, you can get additional appropriation because you have money to support that. You didn't have that in sixteen, you didn't have that in seventeen, and you didn't have it all the way into eighteen, right? So, that's how that appropriation and that authorization comes in. Everybody sat up? Now, so, on this, this, on page four, we're going to go over the pre-cash analysis, and this is kind of what I have to keep in mind when I look at previous year cash balances and now. So, you will see in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty-two, you'll see, give the H F F fund six point eight million, seven point three, six point seven. What we can't forget is that we have, uh, T A Ws that we need to cover in education fund. So, once we took those out, if we had to pay it back on demand in June, that's what your balances would have been. So, you've made significant strides since June twenty twenty, where you were, where you've been, and where we're going. You have six point seven, as, uh, June thirty, which matches the ten percent regulation that the, uh, do have, the district here, the appeal board that oversees all school districts, but your fiscal indicators out, that I have a present January, you've met that requirement. Now, because you were so low for so many years, you now have to maintain that, not just in June, that's their, that's their, hey, that will bring it up, but, oh, you might keep that until December, not a red butter yet, or you might keep it until June, and then you gotta keep it till the next December, so December twenty-three, if we can maintain that, we will make those officials happy. They're not sad right now, I'll guarantee you. In your operations fund, you see where you began, uh, in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, you also had T A Ws in there, and that's right where you would have ended. Now, I gotta tell you, the twenty-one, that was, that is very concerning in June, but you were able to recover with your property tax allowance to, to be able to pay that debt, and you back those anticipated property things. So, we charge more, three more million dollars in the year, you know, that's not it, we have the money to run the cash flow, and then you pay it back, we'll treat your normal taxes. And then, of course, your rainy day, which we have talked about that several times. All right, page five, let's look at our enrollment history here. This is our average daily membership that we spent to the state, this is your school money, this is the money that the state gives to your foundation and complexity. So, uh, I always say, these are the numbers that I always wish are wrong, meaning, if you look at the twenty-two, twenty-three estimate, that's made accounts, I'm hoping that I'm too low. Right now, our numbers are kind of showing a little bit lower than the ten thousand two hundred for September. Um, but that's okay, we're gonna continue to keep going. This will help us build our appropriation, because we have enough cash to do so, so if this number is too high, you know, we'll be able to support the appropriation. Now, just because I had the forty to spend, doesn't mean we spend, right? Because I said, on the appropriation, in order to get, they have to have the revenue and the cash balance to get the appropriation. If you get more revenue, of course, that's fantastic, you can continue to do that, but you can't spend your cash balance. So, even if I build your appropriation up, I'm not going to spend that six point seven million, right? Because we can't go over the ten percent. Not to mention that there's a regulation that all full-time teachers' salaries of this fund have to be forty-five percent of the state funding formula that comes in, so. Forty-five percent of our, our salaries have to be forty-five percent of the state funding, right?
For the money they give us.
Of the money they give us.
For the money.
Sorry, for our full-time teachers. They don't include, and you'll understand this a little bit differently when we do see the budget, now I'm getting into that more, they don't include benefits, right? And that would be significant, what I'm going to tell you about. That's our bad part. But anyhow, so we see this, you know, we understand the two different fires, we have a September account, February account, you get your funding, uh, for each student, and then it decreases if you're in, well, it goes down, you can see our history in the blue that we got, and we have gone down in, in our, in February, so. At one point, they quit, quit counting that, but they quickly came back.
Do you still choose special education camps?
Uh, yes, December, and I believe, December, uh, it could be, uh, April, April first, December, April first.
Okay.
Think about that. September, I don't mind in September. Now, to build the budget, they used April first, our last April first, so that will be adjustment to when they go with December. So, we'll see those adjustments in December and January. So, on your funding per student, I always like to kind of point this out, if you take a look at the graph, the one thing that is fantastic that I want to say is that our foundation, state wide, has increased, and that feels like a fantastic thing to do, but if you look back from sixteen to now, if you look at the red, that's your complexity, that is based off of free reduced at one time now through our certification, you see that we lost over, you know, four hundred dollars per child. So, yeah, we need an increase in our foundation, our complexity has gone down. So, you know, that, that plays into, that's why your blue bar isn't going way up, you know, it looks like the white bar is going way up, but your blue bar isn't going up. So, you need, you know, we, that's the part that we always talk to legislators, we appreciate you decreasing foundation without a doubt, but we still need to have the funding to provide services for students that need additional services based on maybe things that they were not able to be provided by other children. So, we still have to provide this kind of thing. So, we've, we've actually talked about complexity, um, that rate stays in place for two years, so, if you recall, we're getting ready to go on by now, that's every two years that we approve a budget. So, hopefully, the complexity will start changing a little bit because of the data that we had through COVID, and that's based on direct certification. So, direct certification means if you have applied for, uh, C A, SNAP, you know, welfare, right? So, that's all through state, but I don't see any of that, it just comes in and tells us how much that is, and we're done, you know, that's it, so. Okay. Page seven is the annual education, um, revenue review. You can see in twenty-one, you received seventy-six million dollars, and a member of this money proportion belongs to operations, you had been sitting at nine point five million dollars of this revenue goes into operations. In this particular budget, that will move up to ten million dollars, right? The reason for some of that is that I have to give us enough room, because the resolution is written with enough flexibility that we could transfer up to ten million dollars. So, if I don't match that six point seven million dollar, five percent, or sorry, ten percent cash balance, that's where I can back it off. So, I would come into the board with a ten million dollar transfer request, that can be up to our discretion monthly, and I do live in June, live in December, so that also states in there at least once every six months. So, I can do it monthly, once every six months. Um, I've got some new auditors that I kind of had to explain that to, because I came from the D L G F, uh, you know, so, we'll see what they say about that, but this resolution can start really from writing with the D L G F reps to, to understand that process, that way, I didn't have to have you sign five resolutions at every, on every board meeting, and transfer, you know, that just became too much, so, it is a possibility to do that. But you're seeing, protecting eighty million dollars, of which ten million will go into operations, so we'll have seventy million dollars to work with to build a budget here. So, what I plan on doing is asking the Department of Local Government Finance, so when I say these, I haven't stopped you, so I can tell you what they are, the D L G F, you will see that I'll be asking for a bunch of sixty-nine point one, six one, seven nine seven appropriation, because I have eighty million dollars in revenue projected to come in, and remember, whatever is going to go down, because I'm already telling you, this is built off of ten thousand two hundred kids, and we're a little bit lower, right? And if certain funds that are not coming in, if our council, special ed, those two areas change, I have to accommodate for that. I also have to kind of kind of date anticipate the decline in account numbers in February, but ten million goes that, so I have second point eight zero five. You should ask me right away, why is there a difference between the appropriation and the net revenue? It's because I anticipate that reduction in revenue, one. And number two, remember, the goal is to build a rainy day fund, right? And number three, our hopes is to build enough cash, so that way, we will now have an opportunity to continue to increase our appropriation, to fulfill the one mission that money goes back into the classroom. So, this is kind of how it works, um, once we start building that, you know, the ten percent, there's nothing wrong with having a little bit more, so that way you can build your appropriation, so you can put it back in the classroom. Whether it be, you're going to answer the teachers, whether it be, let's not increase their health insurance, so I, let's move that money right into self-insurance and see what we can do there. Because when we do give a raise, what we don't like doing, anyway, what I don't, I really don't like doing, is giving this amount of a raise and then increasing your health insurance positive. You know, that's horrible, that's not a good feeling, so, that's what my attempt is to do on, on this process. Now, you'll see the note down there, that the district has paid forty-three percent of funding for adolescent teachers in this year, twenty-one, twenty-two. I'll explain to you why and how we will handle that. In your book, page nine, you can see the breakdown, you can see previous appropriation requests, right? So, twenty nineteen, you spent seventy-two billion dollars, this is how we're trying, that included transfers, and T A Ws, those kind of things. We're trying to get away from that, so we get in line a little bit, but you see sixty-four million, it's more realistic where you were at. Twenty twenty-one, because we made a commitment to build the cash balance, and we did foster redemption plan, we spent sixty-three million. Right now, it's June, you spent thirty-two million, theoretically, if you double that, that's sixty-four million. But I am adding into it because I have to have enough appropriation here in twenty-three, because we have given raises to our teams in this, inside the entire district, the teachers, remember, we took them from one level as entry up to the next level on the salaries, right? And the appropriation, how we have approved through the Department of Education, is because the appropriation is resident in the ESSR money, right? Because that's where that was at, we didn't have the appropriation, but we promised that we could bring that back on. So, and the funds committed to the salaries, all that will be handled through ESSR, and then I take that on and put it in this budget. So, I'm building that up to handle the raise that we already gave for appropriation, okay? That's why we're also not going to, for appropriation for seventy million, we're going to have sixty-nine million, we should have the other ones. On pages ten, which you have up here, ten, eleven, twelve, these you can peruse through, thirteen, and then we're going to head to fourteen, if you want to know what we're going, we, we previous ones will show you previous years, how we spent the money, and what that category, salaries, benefits. It's actually called professional services, we give you a key on what those objects are of the account number and what they need. Um, supplies, property can mean a lot of things, right? It can be actually tangible, I mean, things going inside the property. Other objects generally are fees that we have to pay, or association fees and those kind of things, but the two areas that you should be looking at on page fourteen is of the sixty-nine million, we are looking at salary and benefits, and we commit ninety-two point one three percent of our budget to be salary and benefits. This is education in nature, instructional in nature, so these are the folks that are in your classroom. So, if we say ninety-two percent of the budget belongs to them, that means all the other things past the benefits that you see there, supply, buying what you want, this is why Emily was so important with that truck, only eight percent is committed to the rest in education. So, I know it's, it's a hard pill to swallow when we're talking about supplies, but again, you know, we do, we do pay for our, our folks here, and that's like, we're still following that. In the ESSR funds that we did get, just so you know, that we paid approximately forty percent of those funds to, um, our teachers for those raises, so that way, you know, the other sixty percent, remember, we first got money initially, like their, their, their regulations were a little bit loose, you know, and things came in about water fountains and, oh, gosh, don't do this, don't do that, masks, um, hand sanitizer, all kinds of things, P P E that we were buying, and as more money came along, um, nationwide, the focus became on, became with buildings, air quality and comfort for all of that, and so we did commit a large chunk of that, and Tony, I'll find that for you, and so, things such as carpet given qualified because of cleaning and what's there, um, and air quality, all of, all of those things, and, uh, here's a little shout out to Andrew, I mean, I think the whole team is amazing, but Andrew has meticulously tracked, bid, held, he knows the ESSR regulations, he knows what's allowed and what's not allowed, he's attended several lectures with that, and has contacted a lot of folks. Um, we hit it pretty hard because the auditors, we're doing something with our auditors this year, um, we have the state board of councils behind, and I'm sure the short staff like everybody else in the world, so they have come to Kermit Chisik, which is a accounting firm, and so that's a lucky day for Minneapolis, for sending tons of We're sending tons of stuff, they calm down. Sometimes I have to explain a little bit about how things work because they're learning as well. We'll probably see a lot of things that will show enough on how pieces or anything, a lot of things on how we can improve, a lot of things I haven't got to. You know, I know as long as everybody stays with this kind consistently, how you've done it, when I get to it, at least you know how you did it and then we can change it. So there's a lot of steps in that mountain to take on. But Andrew has done a phenomenal job on keeping records of that. I mean, of course, Kim's office too has to keep track of that because she does the reports for, you know, this is how we spent the money and that kind of thing. So, you know, we really are, we know that the ESER is being looked at everywhere, right? And so we're staying on that. One of the focus from the audit and from this budget working through it, there are going to be focuses on processes and procedures with that. I'm very aware, it's just I had, I think it's like, can't even change that. It just naturally happens. We're also going to have to look at technology focus with what we're doing. So putting in the buildings, how do we focus in on that? How do we provide for students? How do we provide for teachers? We're going to have state of the art buildings. We need to be able to be in the technology. It's just a natural thing for our students and we have to be ahead of that game. The other thing too, that we have to make sure from heading into discussing the operations fund is our cyber insurance, okay? Cyber crime, because everybody's at home working and everything's on the internet has increased on stationing nationwide in the state of Indiana. This insurance, we talked about what we have renewed, is increasing by such an intense percentage that is almost shocking. And so we have to be ahead of that. And part of getting a lesser rate is implementation of additional protective measures that people still can get around. My techs knows that. You know, we could, we could stop it all day and straight up somebody will figure out a way around that. And it happens. But we have to take all the questions we can, which does cost the district. I mean, the insurance companies are saying, if you don't do this, you're not going to be insured. It doesn't have to be a carrier. So who's been and what price? So those are some of the focuses that I had to kind of consider in this process.
Our ESER funds audited separately from our general funds.
This type, no. This particular audit, I don't know what you mean by that. Just wanted to see if I can explain. The audit period is right now, right? And the auditors look at all our, how we function, which could involve, how we function, like we do pay payrolls out of the ESER money, with food service money. So is this an independent audit just for our federal funds? No. But does it include our federal funds? Yes. So procedures are being analyzed, our internal controls are being analyzed. It does regardless of the fund, but they do take sampling of our current funds and they take sampling of federal funds. And other funds too, they can randomly ask other funds because they will get the, at the.
I was just going to say, that's a state board of accounts audit. And my office gets ESER programmatic audits through the state board of ed. And we have data collections and reports. It's a whole nother side of it. To make sure everything that is paid out in salary and benefits, that it's including time and effort and semi-annual certifications and all of those pieces that are not, it is fiscal, but it's also all the programmatic pieces that are our assurances that we have to follow in the way in which we are executing the grant.
The other thing is ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. You know, the reporting requirement she has is frequent and ongoing. This particular is the every two-year audit. And then behind this, we're taking us only through June 30 of 21.
I know that when we had our regular audit, you know, there could be exceptions and you come to us and they say, okay, should we do this? With your, the funds that you, the ESER funds and I guess the other title funds.
All the title one, title two, title three, title four. And all of this is a part of that.
All right, her reporting, she does on a ongoing basis, frequent, I mean, all the time. But this, those funds are subject to evaluation with exceptions, comments, affirmative statements. So this is what you're traditionally used to seeing, you know? Then they do additional lots on top of her reporting. They call it a desktop audit at any time. And, you know, and they can be random depending on if they want to do a certain type of catch-up. So that can be under too. You know, we do have that second element. If they want to say, okay, we're a little behind. We want to get that, they will, they will do some randoms. All right, operations funds, the appropriation that we're asking for is 21 million. And of course, the Upper Israel, that was 31 million. Now we're getting into our taxicost. And here's where we have to kind of understand what we've got going on here. Your operations fund needs to be built as hard as we can. Remember, we have buses for the wagon. Okay, we're doing that, we're recording, which is totally acceptable. We need to start hitting a capital plan. We're going to catch our buildings up to date, but we want to start having a routine capital plan. You know, we want to be able to replace carpets. If we get to a point where a roof needs to be replaced, we need to be able to get to that point. So furiously working on getting this up there by building the cash balance as hard as we can. One of our obstacles is the, of course, circuit breaker, which is very familiar, almost 10% cap, right? So what you're not seeing then, they advertise, I have to be higher. Remember, we advertise high because when your property values go up, it pushes your tax rate down so I can bring it down to $10. So the unknown is always asking the circuit breaker. And so that's why I have to hit that topic. And when putting this book together, also along, I don't really use those values, but I do have that. I will tell you at a different time, because I knew from that. And we estimate, parterter over 18 million minus the 7.9 estimated circuit breaker, which is a little less, for $12 million in property taxes. So in your book, you will also see the, how we spend money in the past, where we are in June, and what we spent money upon and what I'm projecting. So if you look all the way back to page, trying to look back there. You have like 20 minutes remaining.
Oh yeah.
Sorry. Paranormal shift in operations is the salary benefits have shifted out into a contracted service where you saw right out of eight year one. In this period of time, you're saving already $1.9 million in supplies, salaries, benefits. So we're putting that almost 73% of the operations fund to all other work. Remember, your operations fund, I say through the capitals. We still need to buy some base buy supplies if we want to do something. We do participate in some of those, some of those things. Splices of the district that we have to have. But 27% is salary benefits. So it's wide and different. What I want to tell you about this, this always cracks everybody up when I tell this, people that are paying out your operations fund happens to be the lady that has to go and get this money for you. Happens to be the lady that writes the check that pays everybody. So, you know, and all of our vendors, the lady that pays all the vendors that have been here are significant to the operation of school period. Pretend that is in here, so we're going to protect this one. Because like, you know, if I don't have somebody to write the paychecks, I'm just not quite sure what's going to look like after the pop. So, you know, that's the one I want people to kind of remember. Finally, the rainy day fund. I would come to you with a resolution to reduce appropriation this year. The reason I have to, is because you have X amount of cash in there. If I don't spend that appropriation, the DLGIF just assumes you're going to carry it forward. I don't even carry it forward. I will remove it at the end of this year and I will ask for what I think I need for next year. So next year, I'm just estimating $3 million, even though I have more cash in there, just in case. So every year I will reduce this if we don't need. You've got service funds. On your debt service, this is where you are asking for more bonds. Page number 39. In your debt service, this is where we add the line item that bolsters your tax rate so you can advertise high enough. The reason we put that in there is because last year, our assessed value was around 11%. Today, we have word that our assessed value went up 18.3% more. So I built, building this, I built it to handle a 30% increase because we had word that it ranged from 15% to 25%. So I went ahead with that little extra mile to put that in there so that we can handle any increases. So we'll get to the specific numbers. And you mentioned that basically the appropriation represents the payment settlement due to your bond holders to bring that whole stack up. Also in your book, on page 40, you can see all of the outstanding loans that you have and when they're going to be paid off and the type of loans that they are. You have general obligation bond. Now remember, this is for 23. So you might see your current year general obligation bond because we paid it, we'll pay it off this year. So it's not on them. These are for 23, what you had to estimate. Your type of schools will be dropping off in '22, '24, '25, '26. And the other that you should get, this two should get shown a lot for '24. So we are at a great time to take care of our buildings and make sure that everything is handled. This is how we know the projected future, what kind of funding that we can get in, can't estimate. This is the fund sheet. This is telling you we're almost to the end. That's what the sheet tells us. What I built this budget on was $3.894 billion in property values. This is page 48. Our assessed value has gone up to $4.189 million. So we want to gain around $50 million. So since that's an 18% increase, I have covered that. So when you look at the tax rate above, you can see that I'm advertising a dollar fifty not to get anybody excited, right? You always advertise high because that gives an opportunity for the Department of Local Government Finance to make sure that I made any mistakes, number one. Number two, you will plug in the assessed value and that rate will naturally come down and it will be above the dollar ten. But I have enough money in the debt service to bring it down to a dollar ten. So when I assure you that we're going to hit the dollar ten, we're going to hit the dollar ten. You can see the commitment and promise that was made in '21. Is it a dollar ten? Twenty-two. A dollar ten? Or at a 23 again. And finally, here's your summary. Don't you wish I could just jump right to this? I wish I could too. And I will in the next video, I guarantee. We'll talk about assessed value of these rates, but we'll just simply talk about the summary sheet here for the presentation. I will probably talk about how much money is committed in the funds, the salary benefits. This is the important sheet. This will tell you everything. It's page 49, tells you each fund, how much the 23 budget is being asked for. The debt service will be decreased, right? To handle the reduction of the tax rate. And your revenues. And over to the site tells you where your revenues come from, the sources. And down below, you can see in 2022, I'm not too much higher in any of the funds except for the debt service. Remember, I put that number in there to accommodate the advertisement and our increased assessed value. There's your levy, levy means how much property tax that I am asking action of advertising and becoming in the budget season because that's your levy for property tax. I would be advertising 18.4 million dollars prior to circuit breaker. And that's where we can always ask for a maximum budget. The remaining in the book are the forms that I have to complete for the DLGIF. At the adoption, we will receive five resolutions. We do go do a CPO plan, which will limit your five-year plan, even though I'm not going to spend $65 million on something, you know, $80 million on something. But I do put that in and I do put some serious things in there, although we can't afford the amount that fund just yet. So like the steering, those kind of upgrades. So that way we get the fund used to be built up, handle a capital project plan, our bus replacement plan. We are working with Dan's team if we can. There's still funding available behind the propane grant, but that is a matching. So whatever funds are still available because they had been redistributed through the state and some schools couldn't afford the prices, price increase on buses. So for example, if there's $400,000 available, I have to spend at least, I believe, $600,000 or more. We have to spend more than just what they're doing. Nine in a one for one match. So it would be an eight dollars cash I had to come up with to then on delivery, registration, and fueling. I gave recourse. So I have to have appropriation for it. So that's key. But you approve a bus replacement plan, your tax rates, appropriation, rainy day appropriation reduction, and the transfer, just noting that it's nine, went from $9.5 to $10 million, which is still 115% naughty rule. You know, what happened to me on that naughty rule? You just saw the naughty rule. You just write a letter to the DHLGIF, they have no running on the naughty rule. Why? Because we need money in operations. One of the things you need to run rush operations to, and I would come to the board on some things that are horrible, it's an increase to the fuel. We haven't reacted to everything that we should have, although it was going down. We have not reacted to that. We always retro to those that have done that. We have to take care of our contractors because we need to get them in there. And we already had that accelerator in the contract. So we're set there. Because over here is the, if. Hannah said, it's been quite the pleasure, really this budget this year because I feel like this is good news and that you're heading in the right direction. There's always an executive summary, that's a great thing for this point in time, that are predictions, considerations, things to think about. If you go back to page 22, you'll see how I can't wait for something we were, because we discussed and planned. So it's important to continue to have these facility studies and these partners. We attribute all of that to the limited cash balance. If you don't know where you want to go, it is nearly impossible, regulations that have to cover that. And all the reporting regulations, you know, it's reporting that, but we also have to report that on a financial. So it's just constant duplicate of numbers you're bringing in. We ran a conversation with the DLGIF on that one of these days when we did, when I asked them. But I'm very thrilled that your property values are going up. That means everybody's homes are going forward. That's what you hope for in your life today. When you buy something, you know, it's going to sell. So part of it, attribute to that, guaranteed. So part of it attribute to that guarantee, so we can agree with the statement. If your schools are not attractive, are not beautiful, are not present, are not successful and on a solid financial foundation, your property values will decline. I can give you a list of three schools right now that I have been around that that accrue as a fact. They have to stay with the times. People aren't going to move here if our schools aren't working. Period. We're building beautiful worldwide companies here that have employees. Why would they, why would we want them to drive and outwork? We've got everything right here in these three communities in every way we want it. And therefore we have to be above that. This is a fight that everyone is fighting at the table here in the school district. And I think we're showing that we're, we're at that point. So I think it's a pleasure. A lot of things coming down there in a few months. So that way you got, you got a lot of things going on. I'm sure it's that your budget is, is well looked at, you're thought of, planned, out there. There's not a time where we're sitting at camp and somebody's like, mine even this, oh my God, we have the money. You know, that's the hardest thing. You have the money and I know it's terrible to have to think that way, but there'll be time where you can, you can find those kind of things. You know, there won't be any more. I want to give everybody hope. We're now at that point of hope, right? There is a light at the end of the tunnel. You've met every requirement, goal that you set since the time of the very first budget, twenty-one. Except for building your rainy day and it's not like your rainy day is a zero, right? You have a foundation to build on. So it is a good, solid, balanced budget. The way I say, again, I'm giving credit to me, is everybody. I can't, I mean, look at what everybody is doing. The best in the state of Indiana is not a single one has gone for two hundred thousand dollars in their hands, up to a million dollars. That's a very, that's a shift. So you, you have done fantastic outward. I really appreciate it. If you have any questions, you can ask me now. Lori.
I just have, yes, I have. I've already asked two questions. Laura, your, your expertise gives me, and I'm sure the rest of the world has figured it, the best figured themselves, a sense of confidence and, and I feel like you're leading our ship in the right direction. The confidence piece is what I want to really emphasize because, I mean, if we can't be confident in you, we're creepy. And I, I personally thank you for everything you do.
Well, you're welcome. It's my pleasure. And again, I would love to be the one to say, I am the only one who does that. But it is, it is, it is against every soul. Even every school sitting in this office room right now, they don't even realize it. You know, they don't realize the significance of the input of the success of this district. You've got something I've seen. I could testify to it. I always said, I could take you on, Richard. What you have or you don't, you now are realizing because now you have that house, you got a solid ground to stand on. And to catapult yourself and these kids, it will only turn them down. If we know that we are price for what our strength is, getting tripled out to the, you're going to start seeing things escalate like you've never seen before. Good luck. I don't know why we're talking about ten districts for those of the new. We can sign with, the ten districts can always come and help our kids. How can they help our kids? Text me, we're able to text me that. That'd be fantastic.
I would say this, as a young little lad in elementary school, I was a chubby little kid and I was not very good at math. In fact, I was horrible. And I've got to be quite honest, you thought I was a stalker because I'd sit next to you and math. I absolutely guarantee you that. Thank you so much for what you've done and your team has done and everybody else here. So. That's all I have to say. Anyone else have a comment? Do we need a motion or do we just?
Absolutely. During this meeting, I need a second.
Any question, comments? All those in favor, signal if I say no. I'll post. I'm standing. We're done.